Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for our next budget workshop, Thursday, May 23rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) from the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, could redeem justice.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt our special meeting agenda.
So moved.
I hit the button.
Did somebody hit the button?
I hit the button.
Okay, so I think...
And I hit a second, but I don't know if it took.
All right, there's a motion, there's a motion and a second all in favor of adopting the agenda.
Hi.
And just to recognize that we will have a supplemental agenda at the end of this one.
I'm in, it says I'm in, and I made the motion.
You, your motion didn't, that's Mayor Moller got the motion actually, but are you, have you joined?
I have joined.
Okay. Then we'll see what happens next time. Public comment, seeing no members of the public in the audience, we'll move right into our budget workshop for the items listed on the agenda, starting with capital projects, unless there's a summary. Who's starting? Celia. Okay. Somebody starts. Surprise.
Good afternoon and thank you for being here today. Today, we're going to be talking about capital projects, special revenue funds, our equipment repair and replacement funds, water and wastewater funds, and then we'll have a supplemental item on financial policies. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our Public Works Director, Joe Tagliabashi, and he is going to start off with our capital projects funds.
Thank you.
You've all seen the capital projects on at least two occasions, this kind of is a summary of what you'd be for. Total budget is 1.41 million, 538. Some of the budget highlights for the capital projects program, Oak Circle Path, $500,000, that is a grant fund, so we will have to pay in advance and then we will get compensated back for the fund, for the items that are allowed under the program. So the majority of the program will be paid for by the capital funds, some of the project management costs and design costs will be paid for out of general fund. We do have an 18 percent match, so most of that will cover that 18 percent match. Fennel Path, we're going to continue to repair and replace the path on Fennel between Yount and Fennel. We did part of that last year, we'll do the second half this year. We were replacing it with concrete, trying to make it eight feet wide where we can. That will also give us the opportunity to use Measure T funds going forward, should we need to use those in the future to repair or maintain that path. The emergency warning signal is on this year's CIP again. We're still looking for OES to help us partner up and provide some direction. They're still doing a little bit of analysis on what may be available and what may be the best fit for our community and for the communities up and down the valley. We have some money in drainage fund to help with the, some of our localized nuisance flooding problems. Last year, for instance, we repaired the area along Oak Circle, so that came out of that drainage fund money, and it did help alleviate some of the nuisance flooding that we had seen in the past during some extreme storm periods. We're also going to do the pedestrian, or the bike path. The Miracle Mile is going to get crack sealed, do a little bit of repair, and then we'll micro-surface that. I think the one thing we want to note about that is that the Vine Trail has a duty to pay for 50 percent of those costs, so we will be submitting the bill once we get the bill in for those repairs. We're going to do a little bit of concrete work on the southern end of the Vine Trail as it comes off of California, that's that area that's underneath the willows. Asphalt just doesn't perform well there, so we're going to concrete that and eliminate some of the maintenance issues and some of the potential tripping hazards. And then finally, in the streets program, streetlights, this will be the last time you'll see the streetlights in the CIP. We will be complete and hopefully have those lights up by the end of this time next year. And then the traffic calming program. This year, we used the traffic calming funds to update and install additional radar feedback signs, so we'll look for similar types of improvements that helps calm and control some of the traffic that we have here in town. Next slide, please.
So before you go on, about the, the Yountville stretch of the Vine Trail, we contact proactively the Vine Trail, let them know what we're expecting in terms of repayment?
We do, yep. We've sent Philip Sales, who is the Director of the Vine Trail, an early note in February saying this is what the plans are, we have preliminary estimates, and then once the budget is approved, we'll send along the approved budget to let them know. We're doing the same thing with the Veterans Home, honestly, with the portions that they're responsible for in terms of the joint treatment plan.
And you've received response that they're okay with it?
Yeah, they have, they want to look at it, and we offered them a chance to come up and walk it, they haven't taken an opportunity yet, but we assume that it's in line with other places on the Vine Trail that they've done similar repairs, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about this first section? Okay?
All right, so now we're going to move over to our special revenue funds. As a reminder, special revenue funds are restricted funds that can be used only for certain items. So the first one I'm going to talk about is our gas tax. So the total expenditures are $70,000, and we're estimated to get $80,000 in revenue. And what we're using this money for is for our planned specifications and engineering for our annual streets maintenance and paving program. And that is what we did this year with the Yount Street paving project. Are there any questions about gas tax?
Nope, moving on.
All right, so now we're going to talk about Measure T. So the total expenditures are $550,000, and that's what we're expected in revenue as well, and this will be for construction, major construction projects throughout town. So next year, we're planning on doing some work in the Oak Circle neighborhood and then micro-surfacing in various locations, and that will happen, expected in the fall of 2019. Are there any questions about Measure T?
No.
So we'll talk about the Measure T equivalent fund. So we are required to set aside 6.67 percent of our expected monies for Measure T, and that goes for all the Class 1 bicycle improvements, and so that is 6.67 percent of the $550,000. And we're going to be using that for some of the repair of the Yountville Bike Path.
Okay.
All right, so continuing on with the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act, which is SB 1. So our total expenditures are $40,000, and we're expecting a little bit more than $48,000 in revenue, and this will go for our curb gutter and sidewalk replacement program. So this, this is what we did this year as well, we get ahead of our annual streets maintenance work, and we improve the sidewalk before that major paving work happens. It actually makes more sense for the whole project to run smoothly, so with the improvements happening in Oak Circle with Measure T, we'll be doing our SB 1 money in the Oak Circle neighborhood in the sidewalks.
Do you know if there is a timeline, like a sunset, for use of the funds? If we have surplus, because that's what your budget is saying, we're not using everything we're supposed to get, or we plan on getting, do we have to spend it by a certain time, or can we bank it and hold on to it for other projects? Do we know?
So I believe we can, it just goes into fund balance and we can continue to use it.
That's correct, we are allowed to bank and roll over. It also allows, in the case that you wanted to build a base for a larger project, so it does not have a use it or lose it in the same year requirement.
No, and I would say that we have a conservative estimate, because we're reluctant to let out projects for more than we may take in, but typically, we do get a little bit more, and that money will just go back to fund balance and fund additional projects or projects in the same year.
Great. Okay.
All right, so I'll move on to Special Revenue Fund 30, which is the SB 1186 Disability Access Fee. So this is money that is revenue from business licenses, is that right? Yes, from business licenses, and it goes specifically towards ADA projects, so this will be moved into Fund 50 for disability projects.
Just a little background on this one, because it, this is a odd thing. The state has required that we collect this disability access fee. Then they raised it, and then they decided that if they were going to raise it, they need to give something back to the local governments, so we are required by law to charge it, add it to our business license fee, and now they're giving us back a small amount to be used towards our community ADA project. So I just, this is always going to look roughly like this, because our business license fee structure is very low, so it's not going to look a whole lot different. But over time, 1,500 a year adds up, and we'll support something that is done out of our ADA transition plan.
Thank you. Next.
So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Joe, and he's going to talk about Fund 76.
So Fund 76 is our Flood Barrier Capital Maintenance Fund. As you may recall, this was formed to help with the flood wall project. It included using, at the end of the time, using Measure A funds to help pay for the bond that was used to fund the flood wall. That was paid off at the end of last year, and we, as of this year, will be closing this fund and transferring it to Fund 75, the Measure A fund.
So we don't need a balance for ongoing maintenance?
Well, we're, what, the next slide will take care of that, but we do need a balance, but we're going, rather than try to manage this in two different funds, we think it's a better method to both track and fund out of the one Measure A, and we'll talk about that right now. So the Measure A fund, we do have a small expenditure set up, we don't have any plans to spend money out of the Measure A fund this year. This is similar, what we had done with the flood wall in the past, is have a small amount set up for contingency in the event that we do need some funds to provide some kinds of maintenance. In this, in Measure A Maintenance Fund, the only eligible projects or maintenance we can do is, are things that had been initially funded by Measure A, so all of the Hopper Creek work, the Beard Ditch work, the flood wall, Velagio Channel, all would be eligible for that kind of work. Other projects that are programs or potential projects that may be needed that weren't funded through Measure A would not be allowable under this, under the Measure A rule. So we do, the good news is, we did have, do have a small balance at the end of the Measure A program, and we transfer some, we're going to transfer the remaining money from the flood wall fund into this, so we'll have a relatively healthy fund going forward that will help us manage the projects and programs going forward for Measure A.
What happens if there's an earthquake that damages the wall like we had a few years ago? Is it coming out of that balance, and then we get money from somewhere else as well, if needed?
In the, in the past, we had gone to FEMA to get the repairs that were allowable under that.
Short answer, Mayor, Council, is we're taking the balance of it and applying it. At some point in time, this fund will run out.
Correct.
And then the town will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the town facility. So right now, the fund balance from our Measure A closeout can be used, we've set aside, but if something like significantly you're describing, then that would be the type of a scenario when you would be using your committed-for-emergencies reserve potentially, or loaning depending on the structure.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So the barrier, the 76-4330, that has, it's showing at the end of this coming fiscal year a fund balance of 178, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then Measure A is showing a fund, estimated fund balance of 192?
That's correct.
Does that include the 178?
It does not.
Okay, because I didn't see where it was coming in.
No.
So really, we're going to have 360, 370?
That, that's correct, yeah.
Somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on the order of 376 or something in that.
The action is you're closing the one and moving it into the other during this year.
But it doesn't show movement on the?
Because it hasn't happened yet.
Correct, that's current fund balances.
The movement will occur this fiscal year.
Okay.
To close out the account, move those assets into the exist.
Okay.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes, Councilmember Durham?
What was the, what was the approximate amount we spent on the flood wall because of the earthquake damage?
$600,000, I believe, for that repair.
Just for that repair? Thank you.
Roughly?
Any more on special revenue funds, or are we finished with that section?
Oh, we still have a couple more special revenue funds, actually.
Okay.
So, next slide.
I think next is repair and replacement funds?
Correct.
Also presented by?
There we go. So as you're all aware, we have been working on this for a couple years now, and this fund is starting to get to the point that it's functional, thanks to some transfers in from the General Fund and from capital projects funds, to the point where we're now beginning to fund projects out of this bucket of money. So both Fund 81 and 82 are buckets of money that we will now begin to fund these programs out of, as opposed to Fund 50, which is where they were previously budgeted, projects of this type. So facilities and repair, replacement, this year, we're going to work on Community Center, Community Heart Parking Lot, so that'll be a repair, repair and slurry seal, and then we're going to repair the Pourin Place out at Vineyard Park, more commonly known as the Vineyard, the yoga mat. So both those projects will be now repaired, pulled out of the Facility Repair and Replacement Fund, and we will continue to place money into this bucket going forward to plan and program projects out of this fund. Oh, Fund 82 is on there, too. Fund 82, again, this is the second bucket of reserve funds that we will be used, will be using to program. Fleet Tools and Equipment Repair. This year, we're going to fund the three-quarter ton pickup truck that will be, has been used for the Parks Maintenance Crew. That truck is a 2012 pickup, so we'll be updating that, providing a bit of the new equipment that we have started to outfit trucks with, and, and then we'll have a small amount of money for Parks' major equipment repair and replacement. Again, not necessarily one project budget for that, but should we have something fail like a swing or some, some equipment, then we'd be able to have an expenditure set up for that. Any questions for Fund 81 or 82?
Just one thing, because we're talking about funds, and I just want to, the nice thing now when we move to a fund, so this is a fund that has principally been funded by the General Fund, our allocations, but it's its own existing fund. So for example, the Public Works Director said, "We anticipate that we may have some money for a repair should it be needed." If it doesn't happen, the money stays in the equipment fund. So I just want to make sure that you realize, unlike some of the General Fund, where if we have a project and it doesn't get rolled over, this is its own fund, so the funds stay within the fund structure.
Or for, for, for some pieces of equipment that are in the Streets Department, Measure T will fund a substantial amount of the replacement for some of that equipment. So in that case, it will come out of two buckets possibly, it will come out of the Streets bucket, it'll also come out of the Measure T bucket. So there, this, this fund could work along with, and if we get grants or something similar for the Pass or Parks, then we would use grant funding, and then the bucket from Fund 81, the, the Facilities bucket, to help fund some of that. So if you think about it as an account that's holding and that the funds that aren't used and would be going back into fund balance, that's probably the best way to think about it.
Okay, Vice Mayor, question?
Thank you. So between the two replacement repair funds, we have about 1.8 million. It was expected at the end of the fiscal year, 867 in facilities and 919 in fleet tools equipment?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to point out, though, that each fund has its own, there is detail behind each of those funds in terms of what items, for example, capital facilities replacement would include things like HVAC roof replacement, things like that. So there is a, there's a target for what we're trying to capture and what each of them funds, so it's not just a, you know, we're not just putting money there without an purpose or an intent, there's actually a detailed focus as to what we're building.
No, I know we've priced it out as to?
Yep, but I just want to share that with everybody so that they are aware.
Are we on to water utility?
Enterprise funds, yes. First, Steve is going to take us through some enterprise fund basics.
All right. What we're going to try and do here is some basics, because there's been a little bit of understanding, the utility enterprise funds do operate a bit differently than the General Fund. And we've also had an opportunity with some questions from Council to try to better understand a little bit. So for the most part, I'm going to use the, what I would say, our enterprise funds look and act like a big checkbook. There's one checkbook, so we don't have reserve funds currently, we don't have a lot of subsidiary accounts and structures, so that's why when you look at why there might be a big pot of money in it, it's because, you know, like if you're building up something and you maintain your own personal checkbook and you're building it up to go buy a car, your checkbook balance grows. Utility funds have fairly expensive projects, so, but we're going to be working on some, we're going to present to you some things we're doing to try to, to better understand and to better show that. Secondly, depreciation. Depreciation is not an issue in the General Fund. Depreciation has historically been budgeted in the operating budget, and now it's going to be moved to the capital cost, and Celia will go into a little more detail in explaining that. The other thing that's unique about an enterprise fund is that we have to operate with a number of constraints. We operate with a five-year rate structure that's been approved by the Council, and as you know, we have to go through the Prop 218 process to establish, set those rates. And it's really a very calculated, you know, we attempt to understand the operating cost, all the supplies, materials, and the capital cost within a five-year window. So it's a unique challenge in terms of how we go about doing it. Under state law, we also cannot profit from water and wastewater rates, so we're not allowed to, you know, make extra money, move it around and do stuff. It needs to have a direct nexus and be identified with the operating expense. And I mentioned Prop 218, our water and wastewater rates must be based on the cost of service. They also have to be proportional to each customer base, so one customer cannot, or category of customers, cannot be subsidized by the rate paid by another. And we are currently subject to the San Juan Capistrano decision, which eliminated our ability to have tiered rates in the case of water, based on water consumption to encourage conservation. Our legislature has promised us that they would be taking care of this issue because they don't agree with the end outcome of how the court case, but we have not seen the legislation come forward that would reauthorize tiered rates. So as a result, right now, you know, our most recent one, we have collapsed and we do not have significant tiers, so the cost has been borne out among a broader target because, in this case, higher water customers have actually seen a reduction in their water bill because they're no longer in the higher tiers. Prop 26 also is, governs our water, wastewater fees, service turn-on fees, and again, I'm going to keep stressing, must not exceed the cost of service. So, you know, it's, it's something that we have to factor in, what does it really take to go do something, what all is involved in the cost. And then Government Code 6600 governs capacity fees, impact fees, and again, nexus. Now, this is becoming, as you hear us, we already talked kind of about impact fees in the earlier General Fund discussion, and it's the same here in the case for the enterprise funds. As we're reaching build-out, impact fees are a less significant source of revenue. And also, as you may recall, impact fees for an ADU unit have been eliminated with regard to water and sewer, depending on the structure, there's a couple modifications. All right. In general, one of the things we did is we've taken a look at how are our projected five-year rate studies doing with our revenue projected, how are we doing with our expenditures and estimates? And I have good news for the most part, with the one exception. And the exception is here on the, we are waiting information on what our wholesale water purchase costs are going to be. And this has led to, and we will apologize for the late adjustment of water cost, but as you know, in my tenure here, 12 years, we've never had the situation where we've had to be on City of Napa water as significantly as we have. So right now, I'm letting you all know that I'm very concerned that the number we're putting in, even the adjusted number that'll be higher, I don't know that it's going to be adequate, because the state has not really shared with us how much of the cost of the things that they're doing are going to come back to us, how much are on them, so we don't anticipate getting that really until the fall. So, you know, we projected a reasonable increase, but we all know they've had deferred maintenance, they've been talking about increased staffing, and they have other factors going on. They do a different capital funding approach, they basically pay for all of their repair in one year, so that's why we see some of these swings up and down in terms of how they account for a repair rather than building up a fund balance like we do and then paying for the project. So you'll see that when we get into a little more detail on water rates, but you will see one thing, it's generally the trend line's doing this, even though it goes like this, but the, the end product is, especially if you look at the last decade, significant.
You talking about the 779 number here and the expenses?
Yeah, so I'm just setting, so this is the one thing, so we know right now that that is a concern and we'll continue to monitor it.
So I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Durham?
So, water is becoming more expensive that we buy from the Veterans Home. On top of that, if I understand correctly, from the litigation that we had to deal with, with improvements that they're going to have to do there, will that be built into the water rates, or will this be separate bills we will be receiving along the way as they make these improvements?
Typically, the, and I'm saying this, this could yet to be determined, Councilmember Durham, typically, if there are fixed costs that the Veterans Home has absorbed in their fiscal year, then we see them reflected in the acre-foot cost that they give to us, which is, so yes, that's why I'm saying, we know right now that there's a lot of variables that are going in, and most of the variables lead to increased costs, because as they increase staffing, if they do project repairs, which we know need to be done, all of those are going to come back and be reflected in our net cost increase. That's why I think we're going to see, but we don't know what they're actually doing yet. You know, we try to send them our budget, which outlines our projects and repairs. We generally get told what they've done after the fact, but I just know right now, we've heard that there could be as many as five new positions, and we haven't actually seen them yet, but the, and we know that they're replacing the roughing filter media and a whole lot of other stuff. We haven't seen exactly how they're, how they're proposed to pay for them. So that's why I'm saying, I anticipate will be, you know, the trend line will go up. Now, what I would say is, the staffing costs, once that's in, you know, that should roughly stay at that percentage, so that'll be a fairly significant increase, and then it should level out, then it will be what are the one-year maintenance and operating cost projects that they're doing. But I do anticipate, but I'm also going to point out that right now, Veterans Home water is about half the cost of City of Napa water, so that, that's still something. But if the cost goes, and I'm just going to say it's too early, but I, maybe coming back in a future year, talking about exploratory options that we may need to do to have better control and a stable water system, such as looking at our own well systems. So I mean, there's some things that we may have to evaluate further if we can't be comfortable that we have a good, good understanding of a suitable, sustainable water supply at a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Did I think?
It was in there.
Yeah, what we're, I think what I'm hearing is, we have the five-year rate structure anticipating increases each of those years, guessing basically what those increases are going to be, but we can't guess what the annual maintenance costs are going to be on top of that, so we're hoping that our, our estimate covers at least most of that, because we have to then make an adjustment.
Now, we also have the ability of a pass-through provision, and the other thing I want to remind you, when you look at our And the other thing I want to remind you, when you look at our rates, you know, we're doing 7% a year. So we may exceed it in one year, and if it comes in a little less the next year, the net effect may be okay. So that's why we need to look at the cycle a little bit longer than overreact. But I just, I'm not telling you anything you don't know right now about the fact that the trend line for water purchase cost, and we, we buy our water. We do not produce it. So it's not like we're going to run around and find a different source real quick. The, the cost of our water is going up. And to your point, Mayor, you're right. Our estimate may, in this five-year cycle, not be adequate.
And we're buying City of Napa basically like on the spot market price when emergencies hit, is that?
They, we have a preferred rate from them, but we don't have the best rate because, you know, we haven't guaranteed into a minimum or anything. So it's a higher rate than they might have for others, so yes. But I wouldn't quite call it a complete spot rate.
Out of town, I think they call it the out-of-town rate, basically double.
But we, but we can't do that to out-of-town customers. How can the City of Napa do that to an out-of-town customer?
They, this has been something that's been puzzling me for a long time, especially with, you know, all the trucking and using all their pumps. And don't get me started on Carnaros Inn. So what they do, they have special contracts that pretty much exempt them from what we have in terms of our rate payer, that we can't charge them more, allowing them to charge more. Just like they also have special contracts, you wonder like, how do all those wineries get all that water when they're out in the county? And the county has no water. Napa also has a special contract that says that they will give any of those wineries water if, as long as they, the City of Napa doesn't need it. And so it's called like a drought provision. So in case there's some need, they'll be cut off. But no one's ever been cut off and that more and more wineries are just getting extended water.
And I would.
It's a contract.
And we do have, but again, we're not in a status where we're committing to buying a certain amount of water from a supply reliability. So, you know, they don't know what they're going to be sending us potentially on any given year. So there's some nuances to the contract structure as opposed to how we would have to distribute our rate. But yes, on a contract, we'll talk with them and see if there might be something different. But in general, you know, because there are operating costs that are very different. They have to pump all of the water to us. So I mean, there's just nuances to that that are different. And we haven't guaranteed a minimum purchase. So if we were to guarantee a minimum purchase and usage, that rate might go down. But then, again, you know, who knows if we're necessarily going to use that? So that's the, you know, this really is for us, a emergency supply source, a first priority as opposed to going out on the spot market and purchasing it. And they've been a very reliable partner because what I would say, we wouldn't be able to buy water on the spot market the way we've had to respond to the veterans home situation if we did not have the kind of relationship we have with direct access to the pipe and an ability to make an arrangement in 20 minutes with the City of Napa. So yes, while it's a costlier water supply, it reflects additional cost.
Okay. Next.
So now getting into some numbers. This is going to be a familiar slide that we talked about in the previous workshop when we talked about general fund. And these are expense variables that impact departments that contain personnel costs. So total PERS costs will be $697,938. 51% of that is for the normal payroll contributions. And the remaining 49% is for the PERS unfunded actuarially accrued liability. And this is a 13% increase of PERS cost. MOU increases include a 3.5% COLA and fitness reimbursement going from $40 to $50. 8% increase for health insurance. And we're maintaining the 14.5% of full-time salaries being invested into the trust, the OPEB trust. Okay, so this is a snapshot of the water utility funds budget. For 1920, we are estimating 1.6 million in revenue. We have budgeted expenditures in the amount of 1.8 million. General fund will be transferring in $5,000 to the operating fund for the low-income subsidy. The operating fund will then be transferring $200,000 into the Water Capital Fund 60 for capital projects. And the drought reserve fund will also be contributing $200,000 to the capital fund per the utility rate study. That's a one-time transfer in. And a graph showing those revenues and expenditures. You can see that expenditures are outpacing revenues, but revenues are trending slightly higher. And we hope that this continues in coming years so that revenues and expenditures will start to align a little better. Let me know if you have any questions. I'm just moving on.
We'll keep going until.
Okay. Here are the water utility expenditures by category. So the biggest change here you'll see is capital outlay. We are budgeting almost 50% less this fiscal year than was budgeted in fiscal year 1819. And Joe will expand a little bit about that when we talk about the capital projects. But overall expenditures are down 8%. Okay, and now Joe will talk about the Water Operations and Distributions Department.
Sure, so the budget is increased by 6%. That's really driven by an allocation for the accounting assistant of a .25 FTE. Previously, that was unallocated. I'm sure that person was still doing the work. But like some of our other budgets in the general fund discussion, we've been looking at places where we're accruing time and not necessarily charging that budget unit for the, for the used time. So I think this is in line with, with that philosophy and just kind of tightening things up a little bit as it goes to kind of making sure we're paying out of the right account for the work that's done out of that budget unit. And as Celia mentioned earlier, $5,000 from the general fund is being transferred in to subsidize the low-income subsidy program.
Do you, Joe, do you know offhand how many customers are in that program?
Eight, eight customers.
Say less than 10.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, so Water Purchases and Conservation Department, 614507. This is the updated page that we provided to you before the meeting. Total budget is now 982,486, which is an increase of 35%, which is mostly attributed to the increased cost of water purchases. On that budget page, you'll see that in the 1920 proposed column for water purchases for the veterans home, we increased it from 734,000 to 845, which reflects probably a more accurate number of what the true cost will be. Here is a graph that shows the history of the cost per acre foot. And I think this is what Steve was touching on. You can see how it kind of goes up and down. We are basing our, our projection for 1920 on that 1819 number, 1839 per acre foot. Steve, do you want to add anything about this historical?
And Steve, before you do, just to make sure the council recognizes the printed update, are the numbers that Celia was talking about?
I really think I kind of introduced this a little bit earlier and I really don't have anything more to say other than, you know, we're waiting to see. I think this is going to be a, a real pivotal year in terms of what the true-up on the water cost looks like, to really see what that is. But again, this illustrates the chart that I was, the, the approach that I was telling you about when, you know, you'd see a big capital project, rates would go up, then it drops back down. Celia and I aren't, so, we aren't really so sure that you're going to see the, the drop down. That's a big, 2018-19 is just a, a question mark right now. But you can see the net trend line per cost per acre feet, and it's, it's going up, not down. And I just, I don't have anything more to say other than, we're trying to take a, you know, we've been conservative on trying to project a maximum, which sounds odd. But I mean, we've been trying to be realistic. We just don't know right now how much of the cost up there the state is absorbing and how much will be passed through to their customers.
Okay. Vice Mayor, question?
Thank you. So the bottom line is, between what we got in the packet and our new estimates that we now have up here, our total expenses in water utility purchases and conservation, we are estimating going from 870,000, give or take, to 982,000?
Yes, we increased about 112,000.
So we're looking at about $122,000 more than we thought.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'd love to be on the wrong side of that estimate.
Okay, Water Utility Capital Improvement Fund. Changes to make note of in this fund, you will see on the budget pages that it now includes the depreciation expense that moved from operating into capital, which seems a bit more appropriate. And down at the bottom, we added some fund balance allocations. So we are reflecting of our ending fund balance, what portion is applicable to capital assets. And then of that amount, we're showing 5% reserved for emergency capital replacements. And that is per the utility rate study, which leaves an unreserved fund balance of about $615,000. So we are meeting the reserve, the 5%, which is a good thing. And something new, a different way to show the fund balance.
Is that a number that we came up with? Is that industry standard?
The 5% was outlined in the utility rate study.
Okay.
Right, you'll find that what we, and that's one of the things we're trying to do is, you'll see in your summaries, the reserve targets are on your budget detail. And that helps people to realize that that's supposed to be set aside and not be used is the idea behind that and building it. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do to let people know. It's not just a super big, you know, there's a purpose, even though it hasn't been identified in the same way that some of the general fund structures are.
Got it. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So of the 2.446 million ending fund balance, are we saying that 1,743 of that is actually capital assets?
That's the net value of capital assets.
Not real money that we can spend.
Exactly, so what, what can actually be.
So when we look at what we have to spend, it's 2,446 minus 1,743.
Yeah, it's that unreserved fund balance, it's the 615,000 that's remaining.
Thank you.
So we'd also like your feedback if this is helpful because we did hear some of the council's feedback. And trying to make it also clear because, you know, it isn't a bunch of money just sitting there that can be used. And it's, part of it is unique to the way the enterprise funds are structured.
Well, since we just had a water line failure, it reminds us how volatile it can be. And every time that happens, it's not a small number.
That, that's correct. And that's a great segue into the discussion about the projects for this year. So if you recall back to the slides earlier that Celia was talking about where we have a reduction of about 8% in capital program costs between the two utilities, that big number in this particular utility is a, is a water line replacement project that we just finished on Yount. We don't have a similar program planned for this year. And that is because we look at the water line for the streets that we're doing the work on and we consider how long the design on those streets is going to last and what the condition of the water line is. In the case of Oak Circle, that water line is relatively young in relative terms. And, and we don't need to spend that capital right now to replace something that's going to last a good 25 years more. The micro-surfacing, that's a five-to-seven-year project. So we're definitely, unless the water line is in danger of failing in the next five to seven years, that's another program where we wouldn't spend the money to replace water lines. However, we know that Washington Park is a big number hanging out there. We've had five main breaks in the last six years. Most of them have been in a pretty central location. But we have a feeling that there's other unknown issues out in that development. And we're undergoing that, we just executed that contract on Tuesday. And so the assessment is going to start here within the next week or so. And they're going to look at the pipe wall thickness. They're going to be able to detect any leaks that we, that there could be out there. If you recall, one of the earlier failures was a pinhole leak in the pipe that wasn't detected until it got big enough where it kind of blew out of the ground. Well, that pinhole leak could have been leaking for quite a long time before it became big enough to kind of blow itself out of the ground. We're hoping that we don't have a whole bunch of those. But given what we've seen in the past five or six years, we suspect there are a few. So I just did a back-of-the-napkin calculation with the deputy director, Debbie Height, yesterday, and Don Moore. And we think if you have to replace that subdivision's infrastructure, it's going to be pretty close to $2 million worth of work. So it's going to put a big hole in our five-year rate structure. But we may not be able to defer it longer than that. We'll know more after this assessment's done. And we'll bring back the results of that assessment to you all and have a longer and deeper discussion about what could come next and what their recommendations are going forward.
Councilmember Durham, Becker?
Yes, Washington Park is a younger development than Oak Circle.
It is.
Where, was that infrastructure put in by the developer of the Washington Park?
It was, and, and we don't know for sure. But what we think is contributing are several, there are several things contributing to the premature deterioration. So they used a, a material for backfill that is cinder, came out of Lake County. So that, if you think of the pipe kind of contracting and, and expanding over time, it's rubbing on it like sandpaper, right? So that's kind of creating some conditions. And then that soil is highly acidic, so it's rusting that pipe at an accelerated rate. And in most cases, they would have used some kind of cathodic protection, which basically is a piece of metal that sacrifices itself so that the pipe doesn't get rusted out. That's the better design to do it if you're going to use that kind of backfill and that kind of material. And then we have different standards now, which would include stainless steel bolts and, and plastic pipe that wouldn't really be susceptible to the kinds of conditions that are out there now, or less susceptible. So it's a, really a, a set of conditions that have lined up in a kind of a perfect storm to kind of create where we're at now. One of the pictures that we showed at the presentation on Tuesday, that pipe is, as you noted, 25 years old. It looks to me, if you ask me, I would say that pipe's 60 years or plus. If you look at a pipe that's 60 years old, that's kind of what they look like. That kind of rusted, worn condition, not 25.
I guess my, my real question is, does the developer have any responsibility to make us whole? Because they used shoddy, you know?
Warranty periods are typically two years in California, so, and the county was the, they were providing inspection services and design services for us back then. So it's, it's, it's gone long enough where it's kind of on us.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Okay, so Steve is going to talk about the Water Drought Reserve Fund.
This is the, as you know, in this year's five-year rate cycle, we're drawing down 200,000 to the Water Utility Capital Improvement Fund. The good news is that this fund started many years ago with a $2 million allocation when we sold the water rights. And in, in short, even with the drawdown of 200,000 based on some interest earnings, the drought reserve fund balance will be 1,914,481. And then obviously, the fund is still relatively healthy. And there should we have the situation that warrants it? We did do a reasonably good job of coming out of the last drought cycle without having to do a drawdown or purchase water. So it again remains one of those prudent kind of emergency reserves for the water fund that you have.
I think a little background for some, I think it was about $250,000 a year that we were paying in kind of like water insurance for this with the North Bay Aqueduct. We were never seeing a drop of water for that money. But it was just in case we needed to get a new source. And then we ended up selling that to the City of Napa because we saw no way of actually getting water when we needed water, given also the priority list of which jurisdictions would receive the water. We were so far down the list that we probably would never see any of it. So it was kind of a waste of money, even though it was an insurance policy.
Calistoga just sold theirs, the City of Napa, too, to use all that, those contracts.
And the City of Napa gets to charge us all back.
Well, I think, yes, but they also have, because I want to remind you, in addition to that, Mayor, you're also correct. But about a year after we sold ours, the state issued an assessment that all, for all water holders. So I mean, there's a good and a bad. And I think for us, part of that is, there was a time when the, the town was looking to ensure that it had enough of a water supply to be able to support. Because as you know, from a general plan standpoint, you have to be able to show that you have. to be able to show that you have water. I think in hindsight-
It's also coming out of a ten-year moratorium for lack of reliable water.
And I think what we've learned is that there's a couple better vehicles, but sometimes that vehicle may be more costly in the year you need it, but you're able to save for it, because like you're saying, we avoided, and I will also point out, just for the, the general fund wasn't, the general fund, not the water fund, was the one paying that two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty thousand a year.
And it was before we, we built the well-
Correct.
-as our backup.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the wastewater utility enterprise fund, so here is an all-fund summary for the nineteen-
Sorry, do we not, do we cover water connection impact fee?
We didn't.
Are we?
Well, we didn't, but they're nominal, and I kind of covered that in the impact fee structure, if you want to-
Just a little check in, no, that's fine.
Budget. Okay.
Okay.
Whoops, this one, okay. We are projecting two point three million in revenue for fiscal year nineteen twenty. We have expenditures totaling two point six million. Again, this fund will receive five thousand dollars from the general fund for the low-income subsidy, and then the operating fund, operating wastewater fund, will be contributing one million dollars into the Capital Projects Fund sixty-three, and five hundred and fifty thousand into the Capital Projects Fund sixty-four, and also paying its portion of the debt service out of Fund sixty-four in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Again, showing the revenue versus the expenditures, same thing here, revenues are, are not quite covering expenditures, but they are trending up, so hopefully that's the result of our five-year rate increase. This is expenses by category, and the same thing as water, basically, the biggest factor here is the capital outlay. So this, these funds are actually spending almost sixty percent more on capital projects than were budgeted in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, so expenditures for these funds are up by eleven percent, and Joe will go into more detail about the capital projects when we get to those slides. Transfers and debt for these funds, again, Operating Fund sixty-two will be contributing one million into Treatment Capital Projects Fund sixty-three, and five hundred and fifty thousand into Collection Capital Recovery Fund sixty-four. Operating Fund also pays twelve thousand dollars a year for the Energy Efficiency Loan. Water Treatment Capital Fund pays a hundred and sixty-four thousand for principal and interest to the State Water Resources Loan, and Fund sixty-four, again, will be contributing twenty-eight thousand to the Madison Yount Project, so that is transferred from sixty-four into Fund fifty-three, which is the debt service fund. Okay, wastewater utility collections, yes, go ahead.
One thing that we're going to be evaluating this year at the finance team level, as you may recall, and some of you may not, when we initially did our major financing for the wastewater treatment plant, the, the state did not know if they wanted to participate in the financing or were going to pay. So as a result, we took out a higher amount, and then ultimately, the state made a one-time payment. So one of the things I'm, seriously, we're going to look at is, right now, we're holding on, the state gave us the money for their share of the payments, and I think we're going to suggest that we'll come back to you, because it's holding, it's also inflating our fund balance, but it's restricted, because it has to be used to pay the state's share. So we're going to be talking with the State Water Resources Board about simply making that portion of the payment and getting that, because it's not helping to tell the right story, because it's really not our money. And, you know, we have the obligation to, I mean, you know, the Veterans Home paid us their share, we're now paying back the annual allotment, but it may just be appropriate to pay their share of the debt down and reduce it to that amount, because in other ways, it does look like we have a million four more than we really do, because we can't use that money in good faith.
Hi.
Go ahead, Councilor Dorn Becker.
Oh, yes, under the operating revenue, the reclaimed water sales, is that our eighty-five percent recycled water that we're selling to-
Yeah.
Yes.
And the reason my "yeah" is, we don't get the most accurate return on our investment. You know, we do an environmentally very positive thing, but the cost recovery, it's better than it has been, and we have a cost escalator, but because we were a little ahead of the, the curve on that, and we have to use it that way, this is not, it's not as generating as much revenue as perhaps it might in a newer area or a newer environment where somebody that wasn't getting water wanted it.
That's what I think, thank you.
But it's better than nothing.
Yeah. Okay, Joe's going to talk about the operating departments.
So the budget is up, up, a bit, it's actually six percent, not nine percent, to three seventy-seven from three fifty-six last year. Again, accounting assistant increase, the point two-five of FTE, to better allocate those services that are provided by the accounting assistant, and five thousand dollars transferred from the low-income subsidy fund, per the rate study recommendations and council's Treatment operations, this budget is also increased by about three point two-seven percent. Personnel costs are up eight percent. That does include the two point fi- point two-five percent for the accounting assistant, who manages our utility billing. It also includes the twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars that's budgeted for our methane gas recapture project.
Okay, wastewater treatment capital recovery fund sixty-three, total budget is seven hundred and twelve thousand fifteen dollars. Again, on the, the detail page for the budget, this is where, again, you'll see the depreciation expense reflected in capital rather than operating, and fund balance allocations down at the bottom, splitting out that total fund balance by reserves, five percent reserved for emergency capital replacements, and a half a year of debt service set aside, and then the portion that is applicable to capital assets, and the unreserved is the remaining. Do you want to talk more about?
I do, so if you, if you compare last year's budget to this year's budget for capital projects, I think two things to keep in mind. Remember that the Veterans Home helps cover fifty percent of the costs for the waste to joint water, the joint treatment plant. We had some larger projects last year, including the dredging, dredging of the wastewater ponds. This is the first year we'll be looking at our treatment plant modification, so this year we'll be doing design, that'll be budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars, and then next year, we'll be looking to try to put that project into, under construction. We're going to also video and repair an outfall line from the joint treatment plant that goes out to the Napa River. That line runs somewhere close to a half mile long, so we're going to look at that line. We know there's a few repairs we can make, and then we'll come back in, in the next year or two with further recommendations on what else might be needed to do that project. And then just some minor epoxy to scum well, again, that's a project that is kind of a routine maintenance every five to seven years, that's, well, needs to be repaired and, and covered up again, so that's what we're going to do with that.
Question.
Councilor Muller.
So have we ever looked at the wastewater line running up to Domain Shandon? Do we monitor that?
We have a meter that we meter the outflow, so that we can assess them a bill, because that's my understanding of the Domain Shandon, right? Don't we, don't we meter that, right?
No, I'm just talking about the line.
It's a spot meter.
It's, the, the line's what, forty years old now?
Yeah, I'd have to get a bit more information on that. It's, and I'm sure we share that, it shares it once it comes out into the street.
I think we need to, we'll look at it, my understanding is, most of that is on them, but I think we'll do a little-
I'm just saying, is anybody looking at it? Are they looking at it? Are we looking at it?
We can take a look.
We can, and part of that comes out into a, into a line that's shared by others, so we're looking at it as part of our rig.
It just seems like we put it in, in, let's say, the mid-seventies, I mean, we're-
I mean, we don't, we're not responsible for anything that's off of town property, but we will, we maintain the, the part of the collection system that's inside town property-
Right.
-and that is a part of our normal collection system improvement.
It's in our sphere now.
But we will check, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay, just before moving on, down at those, on those fund balance allocations, that one that's assigned for State Water Resources Board Loan, that two point two million dollars, that's where we're holding the amount that the Veterans Home prepaid, so it's, it's shown there as reserved, so that it can't be spent. Okay.
I guess this'd also be a good time, is our attempt here to be a little more descriptive helpful to the council?
A little more descriptive?
In terms of-
Describe what you mean by more descriptive.
Really looking at the, how the allocations and some of the detail, especially related to fund balance applicable to capital assets, and including the reserve study targets and things like that.
I, I think more clarity and breaking it down for the average person to look at is always a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So the unreserved, which is in parentheses, two point six-six million, what does that mean in layperson's terms?
It basically means that we are in a deficit in our unreserved amount.
So does that mean we, if this were a checkbook, we would be overdrawn, using the town manager's checkbook analogy?
I think this is where, in all candor, the depreciation is a factor, but I think what it does show you when you look at it, it would show that, because in, in many ways, depreciation should be what we're actually putting back in and scheduling for replacement value, in, in a, not quite a comparable, but in a theory. But yes, what this shows is that we still need, we still have a ways to go with our rate to match the needed capital expenditure, because those two do move, I mean, if we didn't have capital replacement needs, then that would start, but you might be correct on the fact that, you know, if, in a true checkbook, you know, this is the, but we don't have money necessarily when you look at how it's obligated and where it's expected to go.
What, what I'm trying to figure out is, we have a reserve for this, a reserve for that, we have a debt payment reserve, we have a certain amount in the ground in capital or above the ground in capital. How much money, if we had an emergency tomorrow, that's not a contingency and not a reserve, do we have in that account? How much, if something failed tomorrow-
Actual money.
-real money, do we have? Well?
I'd have to give you, I mean, it would require us not doing certain things, but there is a cash, I mean, we don't operate on a cash accrual basis, so that's the one thing we don't do our math that way, to be honest. The, the essence would be that you have in your fund balance-
Well, you look at expenditures and you don't expend them.
Correct.
You've got two hundred and forty-seven-
I'm looking at-
That's depreciation, but you've also got a hundred thousand dollar video and repair outfall line that may not happen.
The first thing you would do there, right, I mean, I can get you the cash, we can get you the information on where the cash-
And I'll take this up with you offline, I mean, I'm just having trouble understanding, it seems like if our depreciation is six point three-five-nine and our fund balance is six point three-nine-oh, that looks like unless we do what the mayor says and don't expend something, we have thirty thousand dollars. So I'm just, I'll talk offline with you about that, thank you.
So the answer is no.
Well, you don't have an emergency reserve in the utility, that's the first thing I'm going to say, is you have your, you have your fun, you have the fund balance, we would, we would reapply it-
For me, I might be a let-off.
No, 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 I understand, it was-
But I'm going to sleep.
No, but it's a valid question.
It is, and that's what I'm trying to say, we would reapply where the money goes.
Especially when, when people are asking us about water and sewer rates.
And I think if you recall back to the rate study, this five-year rate study, the, the whole intent of the, of the increase over five years is to get the fund balance back to where it's almost in the black. We started off gray and the red, and we're working our way towards the black, but the intent of this twelve percent increase was to help us get into the recovery mode where we're not operating as what you see today, and at the end of the five-year period, we'll be closer to even than we are today.
Right, I would point out one thing for clarification, Vice Mayor, the three hundred and seventeen thousand under the reserved, per the rate study, that would be the cash available to go to first, because that, the way it's set up here, we're moving that. The five percent for emergency debt service, well, that's generally a factor of the debt, we have to have that, so it's not, and then you have, in this case, we have debt, so we're assigning in a prepayment. So I do want to clarify, you would have the three hundred and seventeen that has been set aside, and again, when we put the utility rate study, there was recognition that we could not get, you know, a higher reserve would result in higher rates, so this is incremental. So I apologize, I want to make sure everybody does understand where that three seventeen.
Thank you.
But it also adds to the importance of the capital improvement plan, and, and having that be a living document that can move projects out of a fiscal year if we feel the need, or move it up if there is a deterioration of a pipe that's getting half of its natural life.
Correct, and I think what you're seeing here is, we are trying to, to be, you know, before, those were all just in, in one number, and this is where we're trying to show you how, and also, how it conforms, more importantly, how it conforms to the rate study that you made your rates on. You know, you're not going to build your emergency reserve any higher than what the target was based on the revenue stream. I mean, I'm just, and there's also another assumption, and this is always, you know, this is a challenge to a five-year one, especially with a five-year rate projection with capital cost. We're hoping that the fourth and fifth-year project costs are reasonably close to the projections, and in the current market, that's not always the case, and that's why, in some cases, you see us have to inflate what we see on the fourth and fifth year. So it's challenging, I mean, in some ways, the way the state does it, while I don't necessarily advocate it, is easier, but, you know, but thank you, and then we can follow up, but I do want to point out, I want to make it really clear, but that three hundred and seventeen would be where you would go, along with reprioritizing your expenditures.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Last, Capital Projects Fund, oh, did you talk about your, the detail of your capital projects in sixty-three? You did?
We did.
Okay. So total budget for Fund sixty-four is two hundred ninety thousand six hundred and ninety, a decrease of twenty-seven percent due to planned programs. Again, the detail for this budget page shows depreciation in this fund, and the fund balance allocations, that one looks a little bit better in the unreserved portion, there's about seventy thousand at the end of fiscal year nineteen twenty, and this fund does pay twenty-eight thousand, it, it transfers twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars into Debt Service Fund fifty-three for its portion of the two thousand thirteen lease revenue bonds.
So that's a different number than we have in, on our page. We have twenty-eight four twenty-seven.
It should, it should be the twenty-eight four two eight rounded up, not the twenty-eight eight eighty-five.
Okay.
I apologize. The PowerPoint is incorrect, your budget page is correct.
Got it.
Okay, Joe, would you like to talk about projects?
Sure. So collections is, is basically flat for spending with the, with the increase that we have year over year. The pump station, backup pump is the one difference in this year's budget. We need that to make sure that, in the event that one of the pumps fails, we have something ready to go in a timely manner. I would say that when you look at inflow and infiltration reduction, we have seen that paying dividends already over the five years, almost five years that I've been here, we noticed that our influence into the plant is much less during a storm than it has been in the past, so in, in a normal storm period, for instance, when it's coming from our partner on the hill, that, that curve rises very sharply during a storm and comes down very sharply during a storm, almost exceeding the capacity of the plant to manage the inflow from the vets home. Very different story on the town side of the collection system. We've put an awful lot of money into repairing and rehabilitating our collection system, and as a result, areas like where we have A-line that runs along Beard Ditch, it's not collecting as much of that fresh water that would have normally infiltrated prior to this rehabilitation program, and when you're treating fresh water, that's a very expensive cost, and an unnecessary cost. And so all of this program now has started paying dividends in the fact that we are now seeing much less infiltration and inflow. The other part of that number, along with the sewer line replacement program, is part of our permit requires us, this expenditure is a minimum. So the, the state said, we'll be okay with what you have budgeted for inflow and infiltration and mainline replacement, with the caveat that we want to look at what you have in, when it comes up for the next permit period, which is coming up shortly, and see the results of that and see what the numbers are so that we can tell if you're being effective in reducing inflow and infiltration or if we need to have you increase that budget. So we're very hopeful that they're going to look at us favorably. I think the one other thing that we probably missed saying with the recycled water question that you have is that makes our permit negotiations just a little bit easier too. Instead of having to release into the Napa River and maybe having enough water coming down or not and then having to wait, we're able to ask our customers from the recycled water program to take water into their ponds. And they, they, they know by the contract terms that they have to draw down their ponds. Even when they might not need water, we're forcing them, water on them. They're then using that water to irrigate plants that are getting rained on anyway and don't need it. But it helps us manage that permit a little bit easier, makes it just a little bit less costly and makes terms much more favorable to the town. To the point where the, the state has called us and asked us to talk to other agencies to help them understand the benefit of a recycled water program and what it does for us in terms of discharge into the Napa River and managing our wastewater on the effluent side. Okay.
Okay. So just a look back at the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed general fund budget. With our expected revenues and planned expenditures and transfers, we hope to end the fiscal year with a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars approximately. And this does reflect changes that were made from the previous workshop. Total annual, annual, annual budget summary for this fiscal year. This includes all funds and the total expenditures are eighteen point eight million. Changes that we did incorporate from the last workshop were to increase the conference and travel budget in the council mayor budget from eighteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. We increased attorney services from one hundred and eighty thousand to one hundred and ninety-five thousand. We increased the revenue for Measure S from six hundred and thirty to seven hundred thousand to reflect the true one percent of the seven million budgeted for TOT. And we added a hundred thousand dollars for the Affordable and Workforce Housing Feasibility Study. All right, and Steve will take it from here. Some fiscal policies review.
Before we get further down, I did want to go back to a general question about the, our enterprise funds. So we're not allowed to make a profit. So what is acceptable, I think you said, was it one forty-seven? That there was going to be a, how much money is it possible to have in those funds at the end of a fiscal year so that it's not seen as being profitable?
There isn't a formula strictly that way, Mayor. What you have to look at would be, and this is why you would have your capital planning. In other words, if you've identified unmet need projects of several million, then being able, much like we have the system replacement fee, building the capacity so you can fund those is sufficient. So that's how you, I mean, that's where the two go together to show that the, the rate burden is not too high.
Got it, okay.
But if you don't have many projects and then, and what you're seeing, I do want to point out, you saw on both funds that we are getting, we're going to be getting closer to break even. And you will have had fairly significant capital investment over this five-year cycle. So, I mean, you're doing two things. And, you know, with the water fund, we just have the one question mark. But I want to say, when we were looking at the analysis, right now, we're pretty close to spot on with revenue projections. Obviously, water consumption can change the water revenue a bit. But the revenues are lining up and budget and expenditure are generally in line. So I do think, you know, right now, the current five-year rate cycle appears to be holding its own. And again, that's why I'm saying, in the case like we were alluding to, we can have a little bit of money ahead, especially as a wholesale consumer, because we are, we are subject to cyclical ups and downs on the purchase price. So it's reasonable that you would have a little bit of money more than just what the minimum is to be able to do that. But when I say profit, it's not, there are, in some states, it's completely legal that they could be paying for almost all of the town council expense or the vehicles for most of the public works fleet would be purchased in the enterprise funds and then released. In our case, that's why you see, you know, there's a very detailed allocation of staff cost, a proportionate, very detailed. I mean, we can go through and show which vehicles are purchased, they belong to that. So it's, that's the detail.
All right. Good, thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Go into the other agenda? Okay.
Before we do that, and thank you, Michelle, I just want to know, since it's a good segue for us, are there any other changes or modifications that you would like after the presentation today so that we would incorporate them? Or are we, you know, based on this session, you're comfortable with what's been presented in the budget so that we can prepare the final for adoption on June seventeenth?
So one question I'll have to, the last slide you showed of the major changes, how are we presenting that to the public? Is that going to be in a, something other than buried in the budget so that we're not asking everybody to find these changes? Are we presenting that slide of information somehow?
Actually, well, we can do a couple of different things. One, they're presented in this public workshop to reflect what you've done.
And we see how many people are here to hear about it.
The budget, when we present it on the seventeenth, will reflect what you actually have approved. I can do a summary of the changes from the proposed and put that in the staff report.
We do that. It's kind of like an executive summary up front. It says, these are the major, kind of highlighted adjustments. And then people are certainly welcome to go.
I'm just saying.
Drill down all the details as much as they want.
Like we will do, the, the approval on the seventeenth will show the whole document cleaned up with all the other attachments reflecting those numbers that you've said. In the staff report will show what has changed from the proposed budget that you looked at on the X date. So that's how we would address that.
There may be, I think this gets back to Councilor Durham's reference to the, you know, rate study and utility, or water rates and people wondering, are they the right rates? Why are we paying so much or whatever? So if there is another paragraph we could add to that executive summary that explains exactly where we are in the rate schedule and as easily as we can explain, no, we're not making a profit on the rates and this is where that money is going. And if somebody sees a balance, this is why we have that balance because of projected expenses. Whatever that means in your language.
Yes, we'll, we'll try to make something that's comprehensive.
Any other input from council? Okay.
I just want to make one comment, I just want to thank the town again for everything they've done to keep us out of all this morass that's going around California about the stormwater collection rates and fees. That's what most people, when they're talking about these enterprise funds, are having a real struggle with. So thanks, Joe and Steve, for making sure that you showed the state we had a nice, clean town and getting us exempt. It's a big deal.
The other big deal is the, the soundness of our situation with pension exposure and our liabilities and OPEB. And that is catastrophic for some cities and we've been able to stay well, well in front of it.
Well, I think, I appreciate your outlook. And I want to say, part of this is go, most of the credit goes to you all for your encouragement for us to run a disciplined structure, to support balanced budgets and also be clear on what your expectations are and, and being willing to look at what are we trying to do with that. But you are correct, our fiscal situation, we are in much better, much better situation than many communities. And you've also been disciplined with it in terms of recognizing, because what I will tell you is, some of the things you've done, they're going to benefit a council ten years down the road. You know, you could have had options to go do something different. But you've also set a very firm direction that you want us to be, you know, we, we provide a high level of service when the areas we work on, what we try to do. We are, I think we are a, recognized as a, a good employer in the region. We pay the market, we're a lean employer, so we have some of the structures that go with being lean. We have invested in good technology with the understanding that that will come back, benefit our organization, benefit the residents. And it also helps to keep our employee count on the lean side as well. But a lot of this goes to you all's discipline. I mean, we wouldn't be having some of the discussions about the OPEB irrevocable trust, the pension reserve, putting some different funds together if it wasn't for your willingness to look at it. And in some cases, take a step when that wasn't necessarily easy. And for some of you, if you remember, nine years ago, we were having a more challenging budget conversation that wasn't as easy as it is now.
And so we can get into those policy discussions. So how do you want, you want us to fully, even though we're coming back into this agenda, you want us to fully adjourn from it? Okay. All right, so. But we're not adjourning from this meeting yet then? Okay. So we're going to switch agendas to.